Missing someone. Oh, no. Okay, I see them. It's not their pictures.
Hey, Jeffrey.
Hey, Dave. How are you?
Good. I didn't recognize you without your glasses there for a minute.
It's time to go.
Okay. All right. The time is 5 o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's August 5th. This is a special council meeting. Meeting starting call to order. Clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Yes. Councilwoman Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Clark?
You're on mute.
Here.
Councilwoman Corbett?
Yeah.
Councilor Robach?
Here.
Councilman Soltes?
Here.
Mayor for Tim Greystein?
I'm here. All right. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will all say together. You're eight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. Justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Our meeting tonight, we have one order of business. That is a discussion and action regarding the filling the vacancy for the office of mayor. Oh, you know what? Yeah, that's it. So first, we are going to start with a meeting open to the public. If you want to speak, please raise your hand. The city manager and I will do our best to recognize you. Is there anyone who wants to be recognized? Let me see if I can.
Mayor for Tim?
Yes.
I do have some counts that were submitted online when everybody has finished speaking.
Okay. Do you want to start that? I don't see anybody looking to be recognized. So
Okay.
If you want to start that, it's fine.
Okay. The first email was received by Robert Wilkinson. He said, I live at 30248 Winthrop Drive. I would like to suggest at the mayor's that the mayor's position go to a special vote. The mayor for Tim noted in the last meeting of all the volunteer working committees she attended, she should be commended for that. These things alone, however, do not are not the reason to vote for a mayor, for if the Aramason Heights has many qualified individuals, let it go to a special vote and let the people decide. The next one is from Elaine Roman. As a longtime Mason Heights resident, it has come to my attention that a certain city council member brought up that the Mason Heights PD should remove the thin blue line flag and also remove the stickers off the vehicles. As a parent of a 2013 Lanford graduate, who is also a police officer in a different state and very opposed to this idea. The thin blue line has been around since the 1950s and is a great source of pride. And although the certain council member tried to backpedal and called out, I questioned her motives. We have a great police force in our city and I'd like to see it stay that way. Thank you, Elaine Romans. Excuse me. The next one is from, excuse me, Tracy Messmer. Hello, you probably don't know me well at all, if at all. I am a six-year resident of Madison Heights. My husband and I have two elementary age children. Why do you make it a point to vote during elections? I really rarely speak up in any fashion politically. I'm ready now because I realize that you have a very important decision in front of you. As a sitting council, city council member, you are now charged with deciding who is best suited to lead our city as mayor. Until recently, I had full confidence that our elected city council members would be able to select a suitable person to fill the vacant mayoral seat. I was listening during the last city council meeting and was shocked, confused, and concerned about what I heard regarding the council selection for mayor. I have sought out additional information so that I could fully understand what was being referred to with regards to Mayor Portem Greystein's conflict of interest. I am concerned that there are inconsistencies in the timeline between what was found and with the documentation in Mayor Porten Greystein's public comment. I am further troubled by the emotionally charged response at any time anyone has questioned her regarding the situation. I feel she was given the opportunity to calmly explain discrepancies or even admit an error. Even once all the information was shared in a way to remove conflict given, she chose not to exercise it for months, only signing the document once the mayor's seat was vacated. These are not actions or behaviors that I would hope to see in my city's mayor. Perhaps additional experience would have led her to handle this differently. Further, there have been the statements made by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark accusing members of the council of bullying and intimidation. So far, none of these allegations specifically name a council person or what they said or did. I am hoping the council takes a moment to address this during discussion. If these actions took place, these individual individuals should take responsibility for their actions. If these actions did not take place, those claiming as such should take responsibility for their actions. In any event, a code of conduct should be put in place. Ultimately, I'm disappointed that the selection for mayor was not properly added to the agenda long before now to allow discussion, which could have settled all of this. Your decision is an important one. We are trusting you to vote for a council member you are true, you truly believe to be the best suited to finish the current term. To select the council person with a consistent history and experience. There are few options that fit this description. Thank you for your time and service. The next one is from Ian Barber. Hello, members of Madison Heights City Council. First of all, I would like to thank Councilwoman Bliss, Soltes, and Corbett for standing strong for the residents of our great city. It is important in these difficult times with the current pandemic that our next mayor must have experience. Councilwoman Rosalyn has proven she's not up to the task with her outburst during the last council meeting. Also, with a conflict that took five months for her to sign the affidavit removing the applicant interest, which wasn't done until the mayor's seat was open. If council will not vote to appoint Bliss, Corbett, or Soltes, then I feel for the best interest of Mason Heights citizens, it must be sent to special elections. Thank you very much. And the last one is from Barbara, Barbara, Barbara. Good afternoon, Madison Heights City Council. I felt that this decision that city council is facing is so important, given the current pandemic. Oh, did I just read that already?
No, I don't think you've read a Barbara, Barb.
Okay. Sorry, let me start over. I feel that this decision that city council is facing is so important, given the current pandemic we face here in Madison Heights, all of the United States of America. I'm sorry. That is why I encourage all of city councils to appoint a member of council who has actual experience to be our next mayor. This is not the time for identity politics. We need someone who has been invested in our community and can do the job on day one. I encourage our city council to appoint either Councilwoman Bliss, Councilwoman Soltes, or Councilwoman Corbett to fill the vacant mayor's seat. If city council can't vote as a majority for for any of these three worthy candidates, I would like to see the citizens of Madison Heights make the decision. Thank you very much. And that's what I think. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Back here. All right.
We have Mark Holcomb.
Mark Holcomb. Okay, Mr. Holcomb.
Now he's shaking his head no.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Is there anyone else?
Do not see anybody else.
No, I don't see anybody else either.
Harley would like to speak.
Okay, Harley, you can speak. I don't. Oh, there you are. Okay, go ahead.
Hi. All right. I just want to say that this entire situation is very disconcerting to me as a voter, as a taxpayer, as a resident. Because I don't think it should take counsel this long to make a decision. I understand it's an important decision, but it shouldn't take this long. Now, I want to discuss the elephant in the room. I don't want to discuss the elephant in the room, but I feel obligated with everything on the line tonight. I want to thank Ms. Gaffstein for signing the infamous affidavit recently. It puts me at ease knowing that someone in a high office cannot reap the fruits of our.
Harley, I don't. I don't see you.
She's frozen. We'll have to come back to her.
Okay, all right. Harley, if you can hear us, we'll come back to you. All right. Was there anybody else? All right.
I do not see anybody. If I'm missing them, they can also enter into the chat because I can read that as well.
Oh, I didn't go into the chat. Trying to keep the screen here.
Did I lose you?
Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead. Try it. Try again.
Sorry, my internet's a little spotty. I'm north right now.
We all get it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, all right. I don't know where I was, but.
Assigned the affidavit.
Yes, the affidavit until a spot for mayor opened. And a public servant, I don't think would have waited until they saw an opportunity that fueled that self-interest, and that concerns me. I would like to give credit where credit is due, though, because Ms. Gaffstein did have poise, most notably during the electoral plating.
All right, I think. She's paused for everybody, right? She's disappeared off my screen.
That's correct.
It's frozen.
Don't. Technology. Harley, do you want to send a message into the clerk? Oh, wait, you're back. Do you want to try again?
This will be my last. I'll keep going. Especially with the electroplating incident. You did have the same. There's a number of city council members that would have had the same amount of poise. The thing is, is that I don't give gold stars for expectations from my representatives. Giving gold stars for what is expected, I think, perpetuates a cycle of adequacy. She fulfilled her duty and did exactly what Madison Heights expected because that's what we voted for, and I'm thankful for that. However, it's when you exceed an expectations that you get this, the gold star. And as a voter, I don't think that the expectations have been exceeded here. So I'm not going to give that high praise that other members on council have. Furthermore, I don't think that there were times that situations were handled in a appropriate fashion, especially when it came to that affidavit. So I think that Ms. Gaffstein has done her job as Mayor Pro Tem well. However, I don't think she has the level of experience nor the policy agenda that would make this adjustment.
Okay. Harley, thank you for your comments. You've. This is the third time. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else?
Yes, Jeff.
Jeff.
Hey, good. Yep. Good afternoon, council. My name is Jeff Hilliard. I'm at 29091 Sherry Avenue. Wanted to first and foremost just say thank you again to all of the elected officials in the city as well as the administration. Wanted to make a few comments that I think need to be taken into account, you know, as you guys are working through this. So first and foremost, you know, it's an awesome task that all of you have. I think it's important to remember that the conflict that you guys have shown over the last couple of meetings has been a little bit, I think, outrageous and is setting up a lot of conflict and divide. As citizens, we're looking for somebody to represent all the citizens all the time. It really not get into clicks and pitting one group against another. With that said, I think that you can never go wrong when you allow the residents to select a very hard issue. And with the council, I think that it's not a weakness that you guys are deadlocked. I think it's a strength that, you know, you're identifying the best person for the job and you have the confidence in the citizens when there is a deadlock that the citizens are going to can choose the best possible mayor. With that said, I do believe that there's been a lot of shaming, bullying, not only by the the Mayor Pro Tem, but by different members of council intended to change someone's vote and or disrespect any of your votes. I don't think that a support for one candidate shows disrespect, disregard, or disqualification for another candidate that's running, but just doesn't have that any one person's support. So I hope you take that into consideration and continue to live up to your oath. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Harley is back if she would like to finish, but I don't see anyone else.
All right, Harley, if you want to take another 30 seconds, I don't know where you're at at this point.
I I went on my phone. I do apologize again. I was just, I would just like to say that I would like to see somebody who meets those expectations. I had a whole thing wrote out and it was a little bit more concise, but I hope you got the gist of what I was trying to get across.
Thank you.
So I appreciate letting me speak with that.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
I don't see anyone else, but if they are, they can enter into the chat, but I don't see anyone else's hand raised.
Okay, I don't see anything on chat. I don't see. I don't see any hands. So this point, meeting is closed to the public and we are going to move to the order of business, which is the discussion and action regarding filling the vacancy for the office of mayor. I'm opening it up, council. Floor is yours. You'd like to go first? I'm sorry, I don't know who that was.
That was me.
Oh, okay, Councilor Warbaugh, guess, please.
Is this the time to, is the order of business here, discussion and action? I assume what the proper process is to make a motion, you know, second it, and then we can have a discussion about that specific motion. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, I'm hearing yeses from the clerk and everybody. Okay, so I move that we appoint Rosalyn Greystein as mayor.
Okay, thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tem Greystein?
Councilwoman Clark?
A second.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded, and now this is the time for discussion.
Your honor.
Councilwoman.
Again.
Please.
Okay, thank you. I I would like to say I appreciate the words that we've heard from our residents and I've heard emails and text messages and and people have reached out to me all week long. And I so much, number one, appreciate the amount of engagement that is going on around this issue and in the appointments, and I think it's so important to have this discussion. And so I'm really glad that we're here tonight. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Soltes, you know, the two of us had asked for this for this meeting in order to have this discussion, and so I'm glad that we are doing this. And I'd like to say also, I think that a spirited debate about whatever the issue is, is an important and integral part of what makes our democracy strong. We are not going to agree on things sometimes, and that is good because if we were all always in of one mind, we would we would lose the opportunity to have a spirited discussion about the status of things and what we should do. That being said, I I have heard pros and cons and concerns and cheerleading and all kinds of things about about this issue and about the appointment of Ms. Greystein as mayor. And, you know, it comes down to a few things for me. Number one, I'd like to see anybody on council or within the community who wants to run for mayor to run for mayor in 2021. Number two, a special election would be expensive for the city. And I don't want to see us spending money on a special election, especially at a time when we know we're going to be facing some some budgetary issues and things like that as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. So and number three, the the time between now and whenever a special election may come is is a time when Ms. Greystein will be doing the job of mayor, and I said this at the last council meeting. You know, she would be doing that position if we if we decide to go to the special election at any point, and I think it's important to, you know, instead of saying, all right, we're going to keep this this temporary situation going for another several months or another six, eight months, and then we're going to have a special election. And then six months later, we're going to have a regular election, and that seems unduly disruptive and expensive and irresponsible. So I just, as somebody who has thought about this a lot, I understand, you know, in the community, it is hard to to know what's going on because if we don't have the discussion in public, we are not, not everybody is privy to our internal thought processes. And so I'm glad we're having this discussion. I wholeheartedly think that Ms. Greystein can competently and expertly execute the office of the mayor for the for the next year and at which time the voters will have their say about who gets to be in that seat going forward. I stated pretty, I think, pretty clearly last time, all the reasons why I think Ms. Greystein would be a good, good choice for this. But most of all, because we appointed her as Mayor Pro Tem and the number one reason to have a pro tem, although it doesn't say in our charter that pro tem immediately goes to be become mayor in the in the exit of our regular mayor. That's not how the charter is worded, but it is, I think, a reasonable thing to do as council people to choose to say, we said that this person could do this job until, you know, in the absence of the of the elected mayor, and we're going to say to our word and and keep that going until the next election. I think it's reasonable. I think she can do the job and whatever we do, it's going to come to a vote in 2021. So that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, another member of council who wants to speak.
Mayor Pro Tem Greystein.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes, I agree with Emily. We've been through a lot this past year, and it's been my first year in council, Emily's first year. And we've had to deal with a lot of things that we didn't necessarily know we would have to deal with and a lot of things that no one on council has had to deal with. So everything's sort of been in crisis mode since December, and Rosalyn, you've been doing a great job of handling that. Thank you very much. I personally think that moving Pro Tem into the mayoral position is the easiest transition. It's keeping everything on track the way it is now. I would say that no matter who was sitting in the Pro Tem seat, whether it be Mark Bliss or Dave Soltes or Robert Corbett or Emily, I would say that that's the best and easiest transition, having nothing to do with whether or not you're a woman or a man. If you were voted Mayor Pro Tem by all of your colleagues, then it makes sense that you would be the one to stand in for mayor temporarily until we elected a new one. So that's always been my position on this. Also, I think that you're very qualified to be Mayor Rosalyn, so I'm hoping that council can come to a decision tonight.
Thank you. There are other members of council who would like to speak.
Your honor.
Councilman Bliss.
So you wouldn't know it by some of the comments that were made at the last meeting, but I think it's time for us to come together. Not because we all agree on the exact path forward, but because we agree on the end goal of a safer, more prosperous city of Madison Heights. Personally, I agree with Councilor Robach. What she said about differences of opinion, I think our city in council is stronger because of the differences. Not in spite of them. As was mentioned in public comments, our job is to represent the entire community, people that agree with us, people that don't. And we were each elected because of our commitment to the city and the voters' individual trust in our judgments. So just as I don't fault my peers on council for supporting the appointment of our current mayor Pro Tem to fill out Mr. Harwell's term, my expectation is that each of you would not fault me, that I believe right now, given the crisis that we're in, both health-wise and economically, that the position requires more than a few years of city council experience. That's just a disagreement. It's part of democracy. And honestly, if this body can't handle when we disagree without resorting to bullying and condescending comments, then how will we ever serve the residents that disagree with us? Frankly, I'm personally offended by some of the accusations that have been made, and I worry for this council if uncontested agreement is the only way for all of us to get along. Honestly, that's not how it should work, and we're better than that. As Councilwoman Clark said, we're a great team. So that should still be true if we disagree on an issue or a vote. If we only work together when we agree, that's not democracy, it's dictatorship. It also creates a toxic work environment, and we have to be better than that. I want us to get back to working for the people. I will vote no on this, but I do agree, if we can avoid a special election, we should. There are three members of council that I would support who are not in their first term. If there is a motion from anybody on any member, myself, Councilman Corbett, Councilman Saltus, happy to support it. If not, I'd have to agree with the people, that I think the people should decide at that point. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other member of council?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Corbett.
I I've been probably the most quiet of the group over the past month or two on this subject. I think as I've gone along with the years here and I've seen issues and council members come and go, I think I've tended to to realize I don't mind arguing with anybody at the table on that, on a proposal, on an idea. Because I know full good and well that next week we may agree, even if we disagree tonight. When it comes to personalities, I get very nervous because I do have a long memory. And I my memory goes back even before my time here on council. I I was active back in the seventies and eighties, and you can talk to some of the old timers and they'll tell you the kind of thing that was going on back then. It was very personality driven. And and that was a problem, and it had a lingering effect for years to come. I'm concerned that we're on the verge of that this evening. I I've had a feeling from the beginning that we were headed in the direction of a special election. I believe tonight we're going in that direction, and I'm okay with that. That is my first preference this evening. I I I get the arguments about money. We argue about money all the time. I've seen twenty thousand spent on programs and ideas that I didn't think were good ideas, but they were later on. If that's what the cost is, and oh, by the way, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that between now and next May, you may not find another issue going on the ballot with it. You that's an available time for millages sinking bond proposals. So we may or may not have been going to a special election later on, but even less working under the assumption that we're not. I cannot support the motion as proposed. It is no disrespect to Ms. Graftstein on the basis of the last couple of meetings. I can in good conscience support continuing this. And I guess if you want to know why I believe that, just look at the last ten fifteen minutes of the last meeting. And 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 really, I think, and really, that's not so much a comment on a personality or any one person. I think that that speaks more to the temperature of the group as a whole. And and I'm not comfortable with that. That's not the sort of community that that we worked for all these years to to produce. I realize when you're younger, the the energy levels are a little higher and things are a little more serious. I trust the voters. I always have, even when it hasn't gone my way, I trust the voters. And I believe in my heart that this is a case where this needs to go to the voters to sort out. And the individuals who care to step forward and offer themselves to run for mayor should do so. And 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 let the voters sort this out. So that's my feeling on it. I mean, no disrespect to everybody here. I hope that come Monday night, we're back working together as a group. I'm sorry that that this all of this happened, but I'm not sorry that I have to take a stand on behalf of my constituents, which are your constituents too. And I can't see going forward this evening with a decision. I think we need to declare a vacancy and and move forward to a special election at a date certain. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Your honor.
Mr. Saltus, please.
Yeah, I myself also have been struggling with this mayoral issue tremendously over the with the last month or so. I read all the emails and phone calls. I appreciate it from the public. I appreciate everyone's opinion. I can honestly say that I looked at this issue from all angles. I can always look back and say and say, yes, I did. But when it comes down to it, I believe that we have to have the people of Madison Heights speak and decide who they think they should be mayor in a special election in May twenty twenty one. I think having council decide for the citizens of Madison Heights surups the citizens' right to vote. Voting, to me, is the foundation of our democracy, and our democracy is worth the monetary cost. If we are the ones to vote, then what are we going to base our decision on? Exactly what criteria do we follow? Do we know how many phone calls someone got or emails that we received? If that's the case, why don't we have interviews of people outside the council as well? Just look at the debacle that happened in Oakland County, I think it was last year, when they tried to appoint the county executive instead of having a special election. It was the Board of Commissioners, one board of commissioners resigned, then came back. It was just a, it was just a debacle. It's a mess. That all came down to, you know, backroom dealings and and very little democracy. Therefore, I I vote for the special election. And I, as the gentleman said today, I want to, I think I want to, like all of us, I want to live up to my oath. And I think this is the best way for me to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments from council?
Your honor.
The councilwoman, the Councilor Warbuck?
Yep. I'd like to say that I agree wholeheartedly that we are all here to so to listen to our constituents and and do what we believe is the best thing to do for this city. You know, one of the important things to do when you are on council, you know, is to we have spirited debate in person, we have conversations with one another one at a time in private, and we deliberate on our own. And I appreciate that everybody can can do that. I have to say I've had conversations with individuals along the way and it really feels very much like it it just feels like politics, like we're playing politics with this decision instead of making a decision based on on reality. I I I hesitate to to put it into the record what what I'm feeling right now because it is it is it is a major disappointment to me that we're we're here tonight after, you know, numerous conversations with individuals and people saying, you know what, yes, I am going to do this. I'm going to support Rosalind, and then changing her mind or, you know, or having a discussion like I'm going to have the, I'll have the vote in November, so you should just go ahead and vote for me. And it all those kinds of discussions are having, coming in the background. And I don't think any of us can say, you know, we we may have a disagreement about somebody's temperament or about how it's going to do, but are any of those things going to change how we're executing our duties as an elected body over the next year? I really don't think it does. I think that each one of us is going to continue to have our our convictions, and we're going to continue to have our opinions and and continue to have conversations in council meetings to make make decisions about what's going on in our city and and how we spend the money and our budget and things like that. That's going to continue no matter who is in the council, in the in the mayor's seat. And it's just, it's disappointing to me that like after this meeting, I feel like I've lost trust even more with some of my fellow council members. And that's really disappointing because I want to be able to trust you guys, to tell me the truth when we have a conversation. And you know, this is not the first time that I have walked into a council meeting feeling like somebody had told me the truth, and I want to take you at your word. I want to take to assume the best intent of anybody who is talking to me and telling me what I what I want to believe that you're going to tell me the full truth. And it feels tonight like, well, I guess I guess I that is too naive and I should not necessarily believe people when they tell me things and they say they're going to do it. That being said, if we, you know, when we're ready to vote on this, we are all going to vote our conscience, and I am going to vote my conscience. And I think that Ms. Graftstein can continue to serve our city responsibly, responsibly with the citizens and with integrity and I think we just need to do that and get it on, get on with it, get on with the work of the city and not have to deal with this anymore. Because what's going to happen in the next year, if we have a special election, all of the people who want to run for city for for mayor are going to have to resign from the city council. And then the the holes that will be left will be filled by other people and our priorities and the work that we're going to continue to do, those will all be delayed. Everything's going to get delayed and delayed and things are not going to move forward the ways that I think that the people in November, when they elected Ms. Ms. Park and myself and and Mr. Corbett, when they elected the three of us last last November, I think people had sent a pretty clear message about what they were wanting us to do, the progress that they wanted to see in the city. And with with the idea of doing a special election, I really feel like it's going to slow us down and prevent us from being able to execute the progress that we like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark.
I just have two things that I want to address, and maybe Larry and Jeffrey can help me. One, if we have a special election in May, the that seats next election will be the following November, correct? So six months later, so we spend twenty thousand dollars on a special election, and six months later, we hold another election. Yes?
Your honor. Yes, please.
That's correct. The the special election would be to fill the vacancy in the office of mayor for Mayor Hartwell's unexpired term, which would run until no November twenty twenty one.
Okay, good, thank you. So that for to me, it does seem like a waste of time and money. And to speak to Emily's point to upset the balance of the progress that we're making so far, only so that some of the members on council can ensure that one member of council doesn't become mayor. It feels a little petty to me. It feels irresponsible. And it feels like we were led to this meeting this evening under false pretenses, and I know that Emily can speak to that because she was the most directly affected by this this evening. And it is disappointing that we can't trust our city council members when they are out touting that they demand loyalty from their colleagues. I very much think that we work well together, and we've got a lot of great things done while we're here. I'd like to get back to work, and I know Rosalind, you'd like to get back to work too. It seems like the most responsible decision to move the pro tem, who will be acting as mayor until May anyways, into that position just so that she doesn't have to worry about not acting as mayor for the last five months of that term. It makes more sense to me. And if you could just clear one more thing up for me, I have been to just some MML training for elected officials. I'm hoping to get to more once all of this settles down. But one of the things I learned is that our government is actually called a weak mayor government. And what I gleaned from this is that our mayor actually doesn't serve any higher duties outside of what city council does because our city manager actually does all the heavy lifting for us. Can you guys confirm that? I know that the mayor does have some other duties outside of what the rest of us city council members do. Maybe you can shine some light on that. And then maybe some of our residents will, you will know some of the experience that we all have to serve on council also lends itself well to being mayor. Because like the mayoral duties might not be what they think they are. Can you just sort of shine a little bit of light on that?
Your honor.
Please, go ahead.
The city of Madison Heights has a city manager council form of government. Sometimes it's referred to as a weak mayor because in voting on items, it's each council member is one of seven. But the city manager is responsible for running the day-to-day operations of the city. And the council is the policymaking body that decides based on majority votes of what policies to adopt. So that's the short explanation. Yes, the mayor does have some additional duties like like officiating over weddings, officiating over ceremonial type things, and in the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem steps in to cover those those additional duties. Jeff, do you have anything to add to that explanation?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that it's a city manager form of government. In other words, the council of Madison Heights hires a professional city manager, and that city manager then runs the city on a day-to-day basis. And the city council is the chief legislative and executive branch of the of the government. Many, many local municipalities the size of Madison Heights have this form of government, and it makes a lot of sense when you have thirty five thousand people, you you hire a professional to handle it on a day-to-day basis, and the council is not, this is not your full-time job. You have other jobs in 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 careers, and that you're you're you come forward to to do your civic duty to to represent the residents of Madison Heights.
So just to be clear, the mayoral position is no more important than any other city council position here on council, correct?
Well, when you were, when you say the word important, I mean, there's a lot of different definitions of what that would mean. The mayor, of course, as you can see, the mayor cannot propose any motions. Only a council member can propose a motion, yet a mayor is probably the chief representative of the city who would attend ceremonial functions, perform weddings, be a representative of the city, even though the council members can also represent the city in certain occasions as well. But her vote, his or her vote, is only one vote, as are the votes of the remaining members of council.
Thank you. So I just want to kind of like round all of that out. The mayoral position on our government is right about the same as a city council outside of some other selective duties and being the face of the city. Rosalind, you're doing a great job on that. Half of city council wants us to have a special election, spend twenty thousand dollars in May to elect a new mayor, and then five months later, we're going to elect another mayor. And this is all to prevent someone with not enough experience from becoming mayor because someone else can't have the spot. So I just want to get all that on the record.
Okay.
Your honor.
Councilman Saltus.
All right, so we're we're at it again. So the two councilwomen are making accusations and and derogatory remarks about one of us or multiple of us are liars. And I just, I mean, when's this going to stop?
Your honor.
I just, wait, no, it's my time.
It's it's his turn. It is Councilman Saltus's turn.
Yes, I did ask for this meeting, and I wanted the public's opinions out on it as well. And yes, I did say that, you know, I thought maybe we I should vote for council, Councilor Graftstein, but that doesn't mean I can't change my mind, and that doesn't mean I'm a liar. There is other things that I didn't necessarily put into the equation in other people's comments. In fact, you know, the woman I that I admired the most when I was on council, sat next to me for seven years. I consider her a mentor. And she said that, you know what, I don't think this is the right thing to do. And so I always took her advice. I it never led me astray. So there are there are reasons. You can't just say somebody's a liar because they they said one thing, they were going to do this, and then and then all of a sudden, they come up with more information, and they think about it, and they change their mind. That's that's so ridiculous. I I I'm so tired of all these accusations being flying around like. That's that's so ridiculous. I I I'm so tired of all these accusations being flying around like like it's nothing. And you know, so this is our reputations, right? And there's people in public are saying like, hey, why are you guys, why are you guys allowing this? Well, what can we do, right? And so you know what, what if I make a motion for Mark Bliss? Is any is anyone going to vote for him? Then it's good. I could say the same thing about the other side, right? You know, it's going to vote for Bark and they want to do this and that. I mean, come on, this is. You know, aren't we all adults here and and we have to have different, we can have different opinions and we. And and so we don't agree and then that's why we have what in place is the special election. That's all. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilor Roebuck, you're up. Yes, please.
Mr. Soltis, I'd like to address you expressly because we did have a conversation. And, you know, you are absolutely entitled to changing your mind. And you've obviously changed your mind several times during this timeframe.
Well, I know about several.
Continue, Councilor Roebuck. Continue, Councilor Roebuck has the floor.
Yeah, but don't make accusations again.
Councilor Roebuck has the floor. Councilman Soltis.
Point of order. Can I call a point of order?
When she is done, I had her stop to let you speak. I am asking you to give her the courtesy and allow her to speak. Please continue, Councilor Roebuck.
Mr. Soltis, I am not making accusations. I'm saying that we have had conversations one on one and and discussed this. In the last conversation we had, you said, this is the right thing to do. I'm going to vote for 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 Ms. Grass King. Did that happen?
Well, can I speak?
Yes, please.
Yes, and I just said that in my, when I was talking, that I did say that. But other things come up in the last week or whatever it was. So that's when I had to make the decision. So you can roll your eyes, Councilor Grass King. I mean, you can, but.
Right, I should not.
That is, and 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 this is typical behavior that we've been putting up with for, you know, how long? And so then you. You know what, I want to make a motion afterwards to nominate Mark Bliss.
Okay, so hold on. Are you, we're, I believe you you would like to make a motion to nominate Mark Bliss for the appointment of mayor. Is that what yours?
Correct.
Okay. I believe that as a point of order during discussion, this can happen, correct, Clark?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
City Attorney.
Your Honor, a substitute motion can be made to appoint. A substitute motion can be made at this point. And if there's a second to the motion, there will be discussion on the substitute motion and then a vote on the substitute motion first.
Okay, so. Councilman Corbett.
This is, this is nothing other than just a comment to the chair. Because of the nature of this particular motion, I would recommend that Councilman Soltis allow this motion to go to a vote. He is absolutely entitled, as far as I know, to do anything he wants. I'm just recommending that you might want to dispose of this motion before you do something else.
Well, I I believe there's a substitute motion on the floor now, correct?
I'm happy to support it as well.
Okay. Motion has been made by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. Is there discussion regarding the appointment of Mark Bliss as the mayor? Through discussion?
Your Honor.
Counselor Roebuck?
So I feel like the sun is in my face. I look all like just eyes. I apologize. I I want to say, I think Mr. Bliss is an excellent councilperson. He and I have worked together on things going, you know, since I joined council and and he supported me in my run for council. I think he's great. So this is, this has nothing to do with my thought about whether or not he can do the job. And I do think that we need to have. The spirit of discussion is important to me and I just want to say, I'm not trying to in any way. Be anything else other than honest and straightforward with with everybody here on council, okay? I don't want anybody to think that I am trying to make accusations of any kind. I'm just giving you the straight talk out of my mouth and the things that I'm saying are the things I mean. They are the same things I say to you one on one in person. And so I would only ask that anyone here would give me the same courtesy. And if we have a conversation and you change your mind, that's cool. That's great. You're you're absolutely entitled to do so. It would just be really nice to, you know, hear from you before before meeting so that. So so, you know, so we're not blindsided. Because I think when I first came on council, one of the things that I was told. Is that we kind of have a policy among council members to not blindside one another about things. And I have attempted to do that and to be as straightforward in private as well as in public with all of you. And I will continue to do that. I'm just asking that we all continue to do that as well. I I want to everybody to be clear that I do not. I do not look forward to having a like a longstanding feud for any kind of reason. That is not my intention of being on council. I want to do the good work of this city. I want to do the make our city move forward, have it be a great place to live and to raise a family. And to to age in place and to do all the things that our residents want from us. So. Let's not like I just like that. That last, our last discussion, which is now over, but we are now in this new discussion. But it's all about the same issue, which is. Oh, what is the? What is the best for our city, right? And I think number one, what I think is best for our city is that we can have honest conversations with one another. And not make accusations. I am not, I'm attempting to not make any accusations whatsoever, but only to assure that we are having honest conversations with each other. In public and in private. That is all I'm asking. I will never, never tell you something on the phone in private that I wouldn't say in public. Which is not who I am. And I I know that we all expect as much from each other that we can, I want us to be able to trust each other. That's all. As far as the the motion to appoint Mark Bliss, like I said, I think he is a great council member and I think that he could, he could do his job. So my question is. My, let me.
Did you?
I wonder, I I'm gonna, I need to rephrase my question a little bit in my head because that's how my brain works. So give me a few minutes. I'm sure we'll come back with another comment later.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Soltis, it is your turn, please. Go ahead.
No, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem, asking.
Councilwoman Clark.
Okay, so I'm no stranger to to what it takes to get a seat on city council. I won my seat by only three votes. I'm also not naive to think that this opportunity might not be available to me in a few years when I'm up for election again. I can only hope that all the work and everything that I put into making the city a better place will speak for me. And that the residents will see everything that I've done and hope that I can apply that to another term. But I know that I'm not entitled to another term. For my first day on city council, when I explained to Mark Bliss that I was going to be changing my support for him to Rosalyn Grass King for mayor pro tem. To give her an opportunity to shine because it was her first year on council. And she she had plans for what she wanted to do with mayor pro tem. And she sat and she explained to me exactly what she wanted to do. And I was like, you know, Mark is my friend. Our kids go to school together. They're on roadblocks together all day long. We vacation together. I was just like, I know, you know, I care about him. This isn't a personal decision, but what a great opportunity for Rosalyn to also shine. Mark has held that term for a couple of different terms. So it's, you know, it's a position that gets passed along. On that day, on my first day of council. When I, when I gave my support for Rosalyn as pro tem and six out of seven members voted her in. What followed that was a game of politics that I didn't know existed. Mr. Bliss had the list of boards and commissions that I wanted to be appointed to. He was the only one with that list. He had called me in advance and let me know how it was going to go. And it was my first day on council, so I didn't really know what to expect. So I assumed he would nominate, someone would second, and then I would get an opportunity to be on those boards. Instead, Mr. Bliss hijacked the meeting, nominated everyone but me as a way to punish me. It was shocking, but it gave me that that first look into exactly the games that are played on city council. And I had no idea how to prepare myself for it. I also didn't know it was going to follow us into this mayoral appointment. Because it was my understanding that the first like natural option would be for mayor pro tem to move into that seat. And no matter who would be in that seat, whether any one of us, that that person would move into mayor. And with this little time between this and the next election, like there is, it doesn't make sense to have anyone else but the mayor pro tem. And to keep city council working the way that it has consistently. I'm personally offended and shocked at all of the bullying and gaslighting that's been going on. After everything that Rosalyn has had to experience here on council. As a woman and as a professional and as a politician, we're taught to be polite and diplomatic. And to not shine light on some of the ugly things that are here, but I might not get another opportunity to be here. So I just want to let you know what my experience has been and how disappointing it was for me to have. People who I considered as dear, close friends turn like that for their own personal gain. So I will be voting no for Mark Bliss because I don't think that our city deserves to have someone like that for mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Uh, Councilman Bliss, please, you're up.
Wow, that's a lot. And let me be very, very clear. My my family's been in this city for 60 years. I grew up here. Everybody knows knows me. My record on council speaks for itself. I have seven years of votes of public comments of everything to know exactly who I am and what I do in this city. Those comments not only were misleading, but completely infactual. For Rosalyn, for mayor pro tem, of of course, I would have been interested in doing a third term. But I voted for her. That six to one vote, I supported her. When she had a fundraiser the following week, I was the only member of council there with Mayor Hartwell. I haven't stopped supporting Rosalyn Grass King as our councillor. I supported her as mayor pro tem. And as far as appointments to boards and commissions, every one of those votes were unanimous votes. There were a couple of boards that I wanted to be back on, like the Parks and Rec Board that I didn't get to be on as a part of that. So I understand that there might have been a couple of boards that you didn't get, but that's kind of how things work. And it wasn't any type of political retribution. Every vote was unanimous for the people that were proposed. So I don't know why we have to get into this childish back and forth. Because of this mayor appointment. As I've said, it doesn't have to be me. I will support Councilman Corbett. I would support Councilman Soltis. I just truly believe that in this time, in this time in our city and in our country. It's important for the mayor to have more than one term of experience. That's it. That is the only reason I've given. I've given it publicly multiple times. Publicly, not private, not on Facebook, not individual comments. I have publicly stated my reasoning and rationale. And if this motion for me fails and somebody wants to nominate Councilman Corbett or Councilman Soltis, I will support that motion. It doesn't have to be me, but I do firmly believe that my job to represent the people means that it has to be somebody. With at least one term under their belt. That means they've gone through four budget cycles, minimum. That means they've gone through multiple union negotiations, which we're coming into. And we're coming into both of those things in a time where our businesses are closing. Some of them are never going to be reopened. And we're in a public health crisis that's taxing to our men and women in uniform. So this is a challenging time. And while I'm not saying, I am not saying that Rosalyn could not do the job. What I am saying is I would prefer it to go to somebody with the longer record and more experience. Particularly given what we've seen out of the last couple of meetings. And honestly, we Madison Heights deserves better than what we're giving them. That's just the truth. All of this infighting, all of these back and forth accusations. And we haven't even, we haven't even talked about. Any of what was brought up in the public comments. There are multiple reasons why. Multiple reasons why members of the public and of council are not supporting the one person that's being nominated. If you truly want to avoid a special election, there are multiple candidates to choose from from this body of council. You're telling me you, as a couple of members of council, are saying that it's obstructionist and we're blocking this vote and forcing wasting $20,000. It's simply not true. We're blocking a vote on one member of the six member body. If we want to nominate somebody else and you want to save that $20,000, let's do it.
Thank you, Councilman Bliss. Is there anyone else on council who would like to bring the appointment of Mark Bliss for mayor?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Corbett, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, go ahead.
I'm just going to reference my earlier comments. And with no disrespect to Mark, my position is firm, I believe, in the the special election. And so I, at this juncture, I prepared to vote no on any nominations brought forward, the possible exception of one. But since that isn't likely to occur either, my position is simply that I trust the voters. They need to step in and they need to step in now.
Thank you, Councilman Corbett. I think all of council, except myself and Councilman Soltis, have spoken. Councilman Soltis, is there anything you would like to say with respect to the appointment of Councilman Bliss to the position of mayor?
Through all this, yeah, yes, Your Honor, thank you. Did, did, I didn't hear if somebody seconded.
Councilwoman Clark seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, you, just to. Just to go over a few procedural items here, an appointment was made for Rosalyn Grass King to be appointed to mayor. It was seconded. There was discussion during the course of discussion, there was an appointment or a motion made by Councilman Soltis to appoint Councilman Bliss to the position. It was seconded by Councilwoman Clark. At this point in time, the discussion and the following vote are regarding Councilman Bliss for an appointment. For the appointment to mayor. I will be voting no. I think that Councilman Bliss has done a lot for the city. I think he he started the arts board, which is great. I love that we have art. And that is something I absolutely wouldn't have done because it's not my thing. He started ITech. I think that's great, too. He has done a lot of good things. So I just don't think that he, at this point in time, is who we should be appointing to the mayoral role. And I think that had this happened during his four years of pro tem, just had this happened during the four years of pro tem that Councilman Corbett had. I don't think we would be in this situation and there is a much better chance that they would have received the appointments. But we're not in that situation. We are living in very different times right now. My priority has always been to help the city and move us forward. It's why I ran for council. I would hope and I believe it's why all of us ran for council. And my priority since being pro tem has been navigating the crises in the city. We had the EPS, we're going, dealing with COVID, and we have our economic future that we need. That we need to worry about, okay? And that's what all of us need to do. Question was asked tonight regarding the role of mayor. Basically, the role of mayor is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the role of mayor is to chair these meetings. And to be very ceremonial. And to officiate weddings. And other than, I believe, the one role that mayor cannot, the one role that the acting mayor cannot do is to vote on the DDA board. But my understanding is that everything else, for all intents and purposes, the acting mayor. Is the same as the mayor for so. But other than the DDA. So I have had, over the course of the last few months, I have spoken to every member of council. And let them know that, you know, I I can step up and I can do the acting mayor and that I would be happy to take the appointment. And if we end. We end up in this situation, which it appears we are in now. And I should actually stop talking because this is about appointing Councilman Bliss. So. That's what I have to say about counting, uh appointing Councilman Bliss. If there's no further comments regarding the appointment of Councilman Bliss. Um this is the time for a roll call. Please uh remember, this is for the appointment of Councilman Bliss to the appointment of mayor. Clark, can you please take a roll call, though?
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
No.
Councilman Corbett.
No.
Councilor Warbach.
No.
Councilman Soltes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Graffstein.
No. I have uh, the, the motion fails. The motion's been rejected four to two. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. We are back to the original motion, which is the appointment of myself, Rosalyn Graffstein, to the position of. Mayor for the interim position of mayor until an election in two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any further discussion regarding the appointment for myself? Okay. Apologies that I started talking too soon. It's getting very confusing. Um. I spoke with all members of council over the last few months when it became um, when, when. Uh now Judge Hartwell announced that he was intending to run for the position. And um. And we all had different conversations. We didn't know what was going to happen. There were many different scenarios. One would be. That uh he ran and he didn't get in and he would still be on as our mayor. Uh one would be that somebody else was appointed and he would still be on as our mayor. And another was that he would be appointed, which is what happened. And uh he and I discussed, you know, some of the, some of the options, how, how things would be working, that kind of thing. And um he was appointed and I have been the acting mayor since his swearing in, in June. And in that capacity, I have chaired these meetings. Um I've had a few other, other things that I have done. Um but I've done that. And I spoke with all members of council. And said, if I end up, if we can't come to a consensus and I am the acting mayor until an election in two thousand and twenty-one. It is not my first choice, but I can do it. I did the acting mayor role. Uh when Mayor Hartwell was away. I've been doing it now for almost two months. Um and there are things that I have put aside because I've been waiting, hoping council would come to an agreement, something would happen. But there were some comments that were made tonight, and I think Councilman Bliss, you alluded to them, that some of the com- the, the comments that were made from the public. One of them is the whole flood litigation. There was a lot of confusion with. And I would like us to have a special meeting to specifically talk about that because it appears there is still a lot of confusion about that. I'm not a lawyer. I was put in a situation where I had to have conversations with lawyers because I didn't know. Um I've learned so much about lawsuits over the last few months. And perhaps we should have had a conversation in council, but nobody asked about it in council. It, it, it hasn't, wasn't talked about since February, I believe. And. Before anything could happen, before I could say, maybe we should talk about this. It didn't take priority anymore. I looked at it as a personal situation. It didn't take priority. We needed to figure out what was happening with COVID with the city. We needed to, to, to take care of our residents, to take care of our staff. Um but absolutely, I think if we have a public meeting to talk about that, maybe we can bring in a lawyer who is a specialist with lawsuits to explain it. Because it would appear, I, I'm, I'm not doing a very good job explaining it since there are still so many questions. Um. Councilman Soltes, I guess, the last meeting, Councilman Soltes mentioned this in the meeting before that. I had mentioned this, an ethics policy. It seems that we need to really be looking at that. And I don't know if it's going to be on our next agenda. But definitely, we need to look into this. There seem to be accusations flying all over. And we need to look into it. And I, for my part, welcome that. And it was something that I wanted to do, but it didn't seem appropriate when everything was going on. And it didn't seem something that should be happening right now. But everyone has made it very clear. Um well, you know, everything that we're hearing. So. I don't know what questions anybody has for me. Everybody is fine with me being. Well, Councilor Warbach has a concern, which I, I do share this concern. I'm going to be doing the. Acting mayor will be basically the mayor without the title, which is fine. I'm not particularly concerned about the title. But without the compensation, um which isn't a significant amount, but um. It will leave us one member on council shy. Um. If there was an appointment of one of us to mayor, then. We would be bringing on a full complement of council. It makes things sticky, makes things a bit more difficult. Um I will definitely be relying on everybody to, to help out. Um as I think everybody would be anyways, because we're, we're, we're working in a pandemic. As far as the special election, I will be voting no for a special election. Because twenty thousand dollars off the top of my head, all I can think of is the CPR Lucas that we approved a meeting or two ago for sixteen thousand. And if someone handed me twenty thousand dollars right now and said, do you, why don't you have a special election six months before um the other election? Or if we did it in August, three months before the regular election, I would be voting no. Um someone quoted to me the other day, they said, I don't think any mayor is worth twenty thousand dollars. And I didn't take it as any kind of an insult. I said, I, I, I get it. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. There's a lot of things we can do with it. So um I will be voting yes for myself for the appointment of mayor. And whenever um a motion is put before, for council to vote for a special election. Unless somebody wants to pay for it themselves. Um I will be voting no to that. So if there is any other. Or if there are any other comments from uh, from council.
Mayor Protem Graffstein.
Councilwoman Clark.
Just have one question. If we move into, you were just acting mayor um until the next election. What happens to the mayoral salary? Is that saved, applied to something else? Uh I'm, is it still given to the acting mayor? I'm just trying to understand what that is.
I'm going to guess that it's not because I'm, I'm going to guess that when uh. Councilman Bliss and Councilman Corbett stepped in for their mayors when they were pro tem. They did not receive compensation for that. It, it is possible, you, you know, I hadn't actually thought about that. But it is possible, as this will be a longer term, at minimum, it will have been a year from June, middle of June, until. Whenever the date is in May, it is possible that um, that that would happen. Um.
Can actually answer your question without guessing.
Oh, please, go ahead.
So there is no increase for the mayor pro tem. She would still be paid as mayor pro tem. It would take a vote of council to actually move that um salary. And so therefore, the current mayor salary would be retained in the budget and would eventually go back to the fund balance. If it were actually still available, it could be allocated to something else. But as council will remember, back in May, we adopted a budget. Based up on reduced revenues that we're anticipating due to COVID. So that money would ultimately be used to fill a gap somewhere else.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh.
The council could vote to give the mayor pro tem, the, who would be acting mayor, the mayor's salary as well.
Well, I would have to check on the exact way that that works, but we have a compensation commission for city council. And that recommendation comes to the board and then the board has to vote on it or take no action or deny it. So it would follow the same type of process.
Thank you for clarifying that. I would hate to see Rosalyn acting as pro tem for, without the compensation.
Your honor.
Uh Councilor Warbach.
Um can I ask Mrs. Marsh, um what is the, the amount that we're talking here? If, I know you can't necessarily tell me like a prorated amount for, you know, what's the annual um current. Uh salary for the mayor of Madison Heights?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look it up in about two minutes.
Okay.
I can look it up, too.
I'm also pretty clear. It's not, it's not twenty thousand dollars, right?
No, I want to say it's eight thousand, but I have it like I'm almost there.
It's, it's something along the lines of council is, is six, uh pro tem is seven and mayor is eight. It, it.
Okay, council, a regular council person is six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Mayor pro tem is seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. And the mayor is nine thousand four hundred and five dollars.
Thank you.
That's the, do, that would be with the raises increased, so that's a rough estimate.
Okay. So um, so I just wanted to be clear. It's not, you know, and when I'm talking about compensation, a part of it is. Uh it's not that it's like, you know, nobody is on council to make money, right? None of us are here. We're all definitely here because we want to do public good. We want to do good for our community. And I am one hundred percent confident in that. And um, but I also am cognizant of. Like how that looks, like if we just, you know, if we keep somebody in a position for a long time that doesn't. That isn't properly compensated. Um. And there doesn't seem to be a, it just to me does not seem like a, a good enough reason to keep her in that position without proper compensation. And I know Rosalyn really doesn't care about the title, so if she were to, if we were to keep her in this position, we kept six council members. One with a mayor pro tem. And I just, I really do think that it would be important if we did this. Um if, if the motion on the table failed, um to appoint her as mayor. Um I would be interested in, in making a motion, and I don't know how it would have to be. Be phrased, but I would want to make a motion to make sure that we were properly compensating um the woman who is doing the job. Um for. Oh, oh, like almost a full year, um, you know, is, is getting the, the proper compensation. Um because I think that, you know, there's, there is such a thing as pay inequity, and I don't want us to be a party to that if, if we can help it. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that, that.
Uh mayor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yeah. Uh a question uh for either Larry or Jeff. If the council fails to declare a vacancy. In the mayor's office and by extension, set a date for a special election. Uh what happens?
I believe that.
Please, go ahead.
Council, in order to have a special election, council would have to call, call for one. Nominating petitions are due fifteen weeks prior to the special election. And with regard to a May twenty twenty-one special election, that means the nominating petitions. Would have to be filed no later than January the nineteenth.
Yeah, that's, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Larry, but what I'm asking you is if the council does not. Adopt a resolution declaring a vacancy and scheduling an election, there is no election?
My opinion would be, it would go until November twenty twenty-one. When the uh, when the office of mayor and, and three council seats would be up for election.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Uh and just one other thing, I, I, I don't. You know, I did, all of a sudden, this, this question of the pay of, of the mayor has gotten all of a sudden some traction. I don't. I don't know, the attorney's office has to weigh in, but the uh, but the salary of the mayor, the mayor pro tem and the council is set by ordinance. Um subject to the decision of the compensation commission, which is, which is authorized. Uh to meet during the month of December of uh every other year, which is my long-winded way of uh saying that. I don't, we'll have to do something else because you can't just increase the salary as far as I know. But that's above my pay grade, literally, to decide. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is. I hadn't really thought much about the title, or not the title, the, the pay, but um. I'm not doing this for the money. I don't think any of us are. Um when people ask me. Um, you know, and I, I talk about any kind of compensation, I say it's basically volunteering with a stipend. The. My understanding is this money is to cover going to events and doing whatever, and some of our time. Um I think I broke it down once, what it worked out to be, and it was maybe five dollars an hour. It, it's not, it's not about the pay. Um but I don't want us to be in a position where we are doing that. And I hadn't really thought about it because. That just puts us in a position, well, it puts us in a very bad position. So um I will have to think on that one and how. To figure that one out. But um, back to the uh special election. Um. We have, our next regular council meeting is on Monday. If no mayor is appointed, then we will just have that. It's a regular meeting. At that meeting, uh Mr. Sherman, perhaps you can chime in, at that meeting, we could make a motion for a special election in May.
Your honor.
Please, go ahead.
Um the sixtieth day is actually Sunday, August the ninth.
Right.
And at that time, council no longer, after August the ninth, council will no longer have the, the ability. Per the charter provision to appoint a, to, to fill the vacancy in the office of mayor. At that point, on August tenth, it's out of council's hands, but council still would have to decide. When and if it wanted to call a special election. And then, and then depending upon the action of council. Dictate the deadlines for filing of nominating petitions. But May of twenty twenty-one is a date that's been mentioned as a special election date. I'm not aware that there are other items scheduled for a spec- special election on that date. But as mentioned, it's possible that there will be.
Okay, thank you. And.
I'm sorry, I just had a follow-up question.
Please, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Sherman, if we have a, if we have a uh. In our next council meeting, if we don't appoint anyone to this position and the, there is on the agenda a motion to. Call for a special election, um. We're assuming that it would get the support from council. If it does not get the support from council, you're saying that it won't go to. A special election, like those four people on council at this point have to agree to go to a special election.
My understanding, yes. Um like, like any other motion, like any other, any other resolution. It would be um a motion by person, councilperson A to put this uh, to, to have the special election. It would be support by councilperson B, discussion and a vote. And we would need to have four people vote to have the special election and pay this twenty thousand dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Sherman? Did I get that correct?
Your honor, the uh. The cost of this election is dependent upon whether or not there are issues placed on the ballot. But uh what I was going to say was, it requires four votes of council to call the special election. And, and as I mentioned before, it is for the unexpired term of our outgoing mayor, which is until November of, of twenty twenty-one. So if council calls for that special election, it's just a, a bridge, so to speak, to have the electorate vote in a mayor. To cover that, that six-month period of time before the seat goes up for another two-year period in the regular election. In November of twenty twenty-one.
Right. So and just to recap, we are um having discussion regarding my appointment. Rosalyn Graffstein being appointed to mayor. That is what this discussion is about now. Um if I am appointed, then I will be the interim mayor. Until November two thousand and twenty-one. If I wish to become the mayor after November twenty twenty-one. I need to fi- fill out a petition and, and run for camp, run my campaign, actually run for election. If I want to keep this, this position is just till November twenty twenty-one. Um if I choose to not run for mayor, then I would just finish my term and. Who, whomever, whomever would come on. Um. And I would, if, if I am the, if I am the acting, if, if there is no appointment to mayor. Then I will be the acting mayor. If council votes, if, if four members of council vote for a special election. There will be a special election in May for six months. If council does not vote for that, then there will not be a special election in May, but there could be a special election in August. So. So if council does not have a special election in May, they can have a special election in August, which would be for a period of three months. If there is no special election in May and there is no special election in August, there will be the regular election in November. Correct?
I can't comment on the August date because I don't know if there's a primary scheduled for August of 2021, but.
According to the state, you're, you can have elections, special elections can be May, August and November. They used to have them in February. They stopped that several years ago.
The reason why there's, the reason why there's such a long lag period between filing nominating petitions and, and the election is be, is in order to get ballots to the military. So that 15 weeks was something that was extended. Now let me just add a procedural comment. Typically when there's a vote on a substitute motion and the motion fails, we then go right to a vote on the main motion. But the reason that I didn't jump in and, and, and make that point is because the substitute motion was made in the middle of comments on the main motion. So I've allowed council to comment on it. But it, and, and we've commented about a lot of different things, but at some point you need to call for a vote on the main motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I wanted to allow Councilman Soltis to make his motion, his substitute motion. I wanted to allow him to do that and he did. And when we are done with our discussion, we will be voting on this. But I think it's very important that we have this discussion. There was a lot of talk, uh, there's been a lot of talk from the public and from council about trust and transparency. And I think we need to be as transparent, I think we should always be as transparent as possible. But I think that right now, because this is once again, there's a lot of different facets to this. And I want to make sure that everybody understands very clearly how this can go. Um, like how, what, what is happening? I know I read an article a few months ago, two months ago in the CNG that referenced, um, a special election in May, if there was no appointment made. It also referenced that Bob Gettings would be coming back onto council, uh, once there was a new mayor, but that is not completely correct. If there is no appointment, if, forgot the appointment, if no one from the sixth member of council, which is what we have now, leaves, so whether that is an appointment to mayor or they resign for personal reasons, then we continue as a six-member council. If one of our council member moves on, either resignation, appointment to mayor, then we have a council member vacancy. And Mr. Sherman, I'm going to ask you to correct me if anything I'm saying is incorrect. I just want to make sure everybody understands. So should somebody leave council for any reason? Then there is a council vacancy. We would take a look at who came in number four, the last highest vote getter, which in this situation is, uh, Bob Gettings. And he would be asked, are you interested in coming back to council? By not having, um, an appointment, then he is not coming back. With respect to the next, with respect to running for mayor, in the election in 2021, either May, August or November. If any member of council wants to run for that position, they would need, any regular member, which is what all six of us are, they would need to resign from their role on council to run for mayor. And this would need to be done approximately 15 weeks prior to the election. At that point, the next two vote getters would assume those positions. They would assume those roles. And if the person who was to, if, if, if it was a regular council member, then that, that's what happens. If it's the pro tem, then there becomes a vacancy in pro tem that the remaining members of council would need to vote on. Is that correct?
Well, you've asked several.
Okay, I'm trying to step through for everyone.
Try to break it down for, for the council. If, if the, if step one would be if council could agree on an appointment in the office of mayor, that would create a council vacancy, which would then require at our next meeting for the clerk to, for a council to request that the clerk file the election results from the November 2019 election. And it's the highest nominated vote getter that would be appointed to fill the vacancy of the council member that, that became the mayor. If that doesn't happen, there is no vacancy in the office of council. And then section 5.1 of the city charter provides, "No person shall be eligible to become a candidate for any elective office in the city of Madison Heights except to succeed themselves, who at the time of filing their nominating petitions for elective office is the holder of any other elective office in the city." That unless at that time of filing nominated petitions, that person also resigns from office. So if there are seated council members, one or more who wish to run for the office of mayor of the vacant, in, in the November 2021 election or at some special election, the, the seated council members would have to resign their seat on or before the time they filed their nominating petitions for the office of mayor. Does that answer?
It does. I think you use the legalese and I use the layman's terms and I just wanted to make sure. I, um, am not a lawyer and I want to make sure that I'm using the correct terms. So, um, this evening there was an appointment made for Councilman Bliss and for myself to the role of mayor. If Councilman Bliss chooses to run for mayor from his council spot, which he, he can do, but he would need to resign. Sounds about 15 weeks out, he would need to resign his role. But if he wanted to continue in his council spot, he would not. The same for myself, if I am the pro tem and, um, I choose to run for mayor, I would need to resign to do that. But I would be, but if I choose to not run for mayor, I would continue in my role on council until the November 2021 election as a regular council. I would not need to resign to run for my spot on council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. And I would continue as the acting mayor until such time as a new mayor is elected, either in May, August or November.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, your honor, let me, when you say acting mayor, you're, you're the mayor pro tem.
Right.
Responsibility under the charter to act as the mayor in the absence of a mayor. So you're not technically the mayor, you're still the mayor pro tem. And, and your council person, and it's up to council to decide who is, who's to be in that position of mayor pro tem. So if you decided not to run for mayor and decided you wanted to, uh, run as a council member, you would not have to resign your seat. You're running for the same seat.
Right. And the pro, pro tem is just until November 2021. It's, was alluded to earlier that whenever we have, every two years, we have an election. And I think is the very first thing that we do is we appoint the pro tem. Okay. Okay, um. I think.
Your honor.
Councilman Bliss.
So if, if I'm hearing things correctly, it sounds like a few members of council would like to block going to a special election. If that happens and they succeed in blocking the special election, then nothing changes, none of the dynamics on council change though. Two questions to the city attorney's office. The, the first is if that happens, then couldn't the governor under, uh, law appoint a mayor? If we take no action on it and we don't call for the special election? And second, couldn't a citizen petition also put it on the special election or put it on a ballot?
Your honor, as to the first question, I don't, I don't know if the governor has authority to appoint a mayor. I'd have to research that issue. And as to the second question, I think it's only, it's incumbent upon council to call the special election. I don't, I don't know whether a citizen could call for a special election on his own by getting a petition signed. They could put up, you might be able to get some sort of, uh, initiative, some sort of referendum or initiatory petition signed to get it on a ballot. But I don't think it, I don't know that it could, would necessarily relate to filling a vacancy in the office of mayor. I mean, this is a council call per the charter. Council has 60 days within which to do it. Council is well aware of the history that I've provided to council as to the genesis of section 5.1 of the charter. And, and until Sunday, August 9th at midnight, count, it's in council's court to decide if council chooses that it, if four members of council decide they want to call a special election, sometime after that, they can do it.
Could you read the exact charter language that you're referencing?
Yes. The language reads, by, the language reads, and the section I'm quoting from is 5.7, small a of the city charter, which provides in pertinent part as follows. "Any vacancy which occurs in the office of mayor shall be filled by appointment from one of the remaining council members by a majority vote of the remaining council members. Such appointment shall be made on or before 60 days after the vacancy occurs and shall be for the balance, unexpired term."
And what about the section on the special election that follows?
There's, there are charter provisions relating to special elections, but much of that has been superseded by state election law.
Okay. Uh, are there any other, any other question or comments from, councilman members regarding the appointment of myself, Rosalind Graffstein, to mayor?
Your honor.
Councilman Soltis.
I, just a quick question. So if this were to pass, then, uh, the runner-up would be, um, Bob Gettings. And so when, and so then when would that person be able to fill it then?
Your honor.
City manager.
Monday. Please, Mr. Sherman.
Also could request tonight that it be placed on the, the August 10th, uh, to, to file the election results on August 10th and make the appointment August 10th or August 27th. At one of our next regular council meetings, it could happen.
August 24th.
I mean, August 24th.
That's fine. Okay.
The agenda, the agenda, the agenda is pretty well set for August 10th. But I think, uh, I think the city manager of council would decide the issue tonight. I think that the manager would be able to add it to the agenda.
And Councilman Soltis, I would support that for my, well, actually I'm not allowed to support, so I take that back.
Can I mention, your honor?
Please.
The other thing I was going to mention to council, I'm sure council understands, but I'm going to say it anyway. In the event that the main motion passed, which not only, which not only causes a vacancy in the position of council, which is filled by the highest nominated vote getter of the last preceding election, council would also have to take up the issue of appointing a mayor pro tem for that interim period between now and November of 2021 also.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. That is something most likely that would go on the agenda on the 10th and that we, we will discuss that next. Is there anything else from council members?
Your honor.
Councilman Soltis.
Yeah. This is obviously unprecedented for me, um, in the seven years and especially this meeting. So I'm going to ask, um, is there a way that we can take a five-minute recess?
Up to the majority of council, your honor. But let me mention this. Council can take a five-minute recess if, if the, if that's the wish of the majority of council. But all deliberations relating to this topic must occur in public at the meeting. In terms of where we go from here.
So I, I'm leery of agreeing to a recess because I feel as though it's going to look like members are collaborating with each other. And as, I am also being cognizant of the time because I believe one of our council members has made the statement they needed to leave early.
Your, your honor?
Please.
So Larry, what? The deliberations, any deliberations has to be out in the public? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. In other words, if you take a recess, I wouldn't want you to have go into some sort of private chat room or, or have, have some sort of dialogue with other council members. We could take a recess for any reason, but I just wanted to make it clear that all of the deliberations on the main motion that's on the floor needs to be made in public for everyone to hear what your reasonings are, what, where you're going and what your vote is.
So.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Please.
Oh, sorry. If you were nominated mayor tonight, um, and Bob Gettings got on, that would be another conservative member back on city council, correct?
I, I'm not going to categorize him as conservative or not. It is another member who has experience. I believe he has eight years' experience, if I'm correct. But I welcome Mr. Gettings to, to come back. I am quite happy to have Mr. Gettings come back.
What I hear, he was very good at his job. I'd like to have him back too.
Very involved with parks and rec.
Your honor.
Councilman Bliss.
Uh, I'd like to make a substitute motion to appoint, uh, Councilman Corbett as mayor.
Your honor.
Please.
That motion is not properly for the council. There needs to be a vote on the main motion before any other motions are made.
Okay, um.
Your honor, what did, what did legal counsel say?
He said that we can't vote on Mr. Corbett being appointed to mayor at this point.
So is that because we've done one substitute motion?
That's because you have not had a vote yet on the main motion. After the main, if the main motion failed, if the main motion were to fail, you could make any other motions you'd like. But the kid, that's not properly before the council at this point.
Okay, I think for the record, I am going to vote yes for my, my appointment to mayor, for Rosalind Graffton to be appointed, uh, to mayor. My first action as mayor, should it go through, will be to ask the city manager, uh, if we can add the appointment, I hope that's the correct term, of Bob Gettings to council, or I, I don't know all the correct terms here, but that would be, that would be what I would do. And then we would have a full complement with the complete understanding that this role is temporary until the election in November. Any other comments? Okay, Clark, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Wait, I'm sorry, your honor. Can I interrupt? This is unprecedented times.
I don't know if you can. I don't know the proper procedure, but I, I will let you, if I can, if I can, I guess if I can, I will let you. I just, please.
No, no, go ahead. Go ahead. That's all right. Yeah.
I want to meet, Mr. Corbett, did you have something?
No, just getting ready to vote.
Okay, I just, it is unprecedented times and it's very, I, I know everyone's looking at the same screen as me and trying to figure out who's talking when and who has their hand up and whatever. And Mr. Soltis, if you have something to say, I want you to, you, you, you can, you can speak, I think. I, I will let you speak if I'm allowed to. And now I don't know if you froze, you're just not interested, so.
No, believe me, that's, um, I, I, I just, uh, I just, it just leaves a kind of a sour taste in my mouth. I don't want to be, um, um, an obstructionist. I, I never planned on that. I never planned on being, uh, considered a liar. Mayor Pro Tem, I think you'd get a kick out of this. When I was a kid, they used to call me Dudley Do Right. Remember the cartoon character?
I've heard of Dudley Do Right.
Right. He was the, uh, the Canadian Mountie. And of course he. Right, he was the, the Canadian Mountie, and of course, he did everything he was supposed to do, and told the truth, so I, I just don't want the public to understand that, you know, my heart's in the right place, and, and there was no intentions for, or, excuse me, councillor, or back. And I just didn't want, I just didn't want to offend anybody, that's all.
Okay, I don't know that I ever watched Dudley Do-Right, but I do believe I watched different TV, and I had different role models, and however, however else, but I don't watch Canadian TV anymore, and Madison Heights is my home, it's the only place I've lived in the country, so, all right, we were going to vote, so. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? This is for the appointment of Rosalind Grassing to fill out the term from Mayor Hartwell, after which, I guess until the, the end of the term, which is November 2021. Clerk, please go ahead.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilor Rorback?
Yeah.
I'm going to vote yes.
Councilman Bliss?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Grassing?
Yes, motion carries for two. Thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening. When we are done this call, if, no, I was going to say I will talk to the city manager about our next steps.
I think I would have a question for Larry, before I think that the council seat has to be declared vacant, and then we'll add it to the agenda for the appointment of Bob Gettings on Monday.
That is correct, Your Honor.
Mr. Sherman, or if the clerk, if someone can let me know the, the next proper procedure, I was going to go to closing comments, but I think, I think there are some procedural issues we do need to deal with, I don't know if we need to do that in, in public to say, at this meeting, or later, so.
If council wishes to appoint Bob Gettings tonight, they need to declare the council seat vacant.
Tonight?
You would need, no, you would need a motion tonight to declare the council seat vacant, and then I would add to the agenda, the appointment of Bob Gettings.
Mayor Pro Tem Grassing?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'd like to make a motion to, I'm sorry, let's, can you help me with the language again, to, to declare Rosalind Grassing's seat vacant.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Your Honor.
Councilor Rorback?
One second.
Thank you, a motion has been made and seconded to appoint, or to declare my regular council seat as vacant. Is there a discussion, Mr. Sherman?
I would ask the maker of the motion and support to agree to request that council place on the next agenda, the official city council election results for the November 5th, 2019 election, in conjunction.
Do the maker and support?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, support, okay, thank you.
The next meeting also.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, my, broke up.
So, so the receiving and filing of the official city council election results for the November 2019 election will be on the next agenda, together with the appointment of Mr. Gettings as the highest nominated unsuccessful vote getter that election.
Yes, is it, I'm sorry, I'm having a real, do you, so, is it?
Does the maker agree with the amendment?
Yes, we both agree.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, my connection is, is not working properly, all right. Is there any other, are there any other procedural items that need to be discussed this evening, at this meeting?
Do we need to go down that proposal, or was that just?
Oh, do we need to vote on it? Okay, thank you, Mr. Corbett, then, is there any discussion, my connection is, is there any discussion regarding motion? Okay, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yeah.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Grassing?
I vote yes, thank you. Okay, that is on the agenda, are there any other items I know I need to resign, or believe I need to resign from my boards and commissions? Is that, is that something I don't need to do this evening?
You don't have to do that today.
Okay, all right, any other procedural items we need to do this evening? All right, then, I invite closing comments from all council. Mr. Corbett, we'll start with you.
Congratulations and good luck, that's all for now, I think we've talked quite a bit, and I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yeah, I like all those sentiments, congratulations, really hoping that we can put this discussion behind us and get back to work.
Great, thank you. Councilor Rorback?
Congratulations, I look forward to working with you all to do great things for the city, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh.
No comments.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Rotman?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, city attorney?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Clark?
Just congratulations, Mayor Grassing, I've done enough tin wagons tonight, so I'll sign off now.
Thank you, and Councilman Soltis?
Yeah, congratulations for the, to the new mayor. I just hope that we get together and we start, and we do the work of the people, and, and that's, that's what we're here for, so congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for your participation tonight, we are living in unprecedented times, I appreciate the discussion, and I would like us to all move forward as a team, everyone, everyone, thank you, everyone, for your input, the time is now 6:53, our next regular meeting will be Monday, August 10th, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.